Well, good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley Evans School District 6 on this 23rd day of August 2021. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not regarding agenda items.
Not regarding agenda items. All right. So we'll wait to the very end to allow those, those people to speak. So we are to our work session report. So Ms. Crane, I'll hand it over to you. Ms. Crane, will you call the roll for us, please?
Thank you, Mrs. Myers, for providing that. I have a few other updates for you I'd like to share. We are still working through some issues at transportation. We are short 10 drivers in, in the department overall and then we do have nine or so of our people out in quarantines or in isolation due to COVID. And so we, you know, we're running double and triple routes to get the children picked up, but I was mistaken when I shared last week that we had cleared the wait lists for transportation. We do still have families waiting for transportation and wait lists haven't been cleared. So when I asked the question today about why wait lists hadn't been cleared, it's because the office workers who are working to clear those lists and get the students assigned to buses are out driving bus every day. So we're, you know, they're working hard, they're doing the best they can to get children to school and from school and, you know, I am very thankful to the parents for being so patient as we work through those issues in transportation. I'll keep you posted in our weekly memo as, as things continue to evolve with transportation. I wanted to share a celebration with you all. You may have seen in, in our bulletin or in the paper that District 6 was a winner for the Succeeds Prize for 2021. And my understanding is this is really a pretty big deal because you win this for, for being innovative and agile and entrepreneurial in, in what you are doing in the district. We were nominated by the Success Foundation. Julie Hill sent in the nomination and we were selected. And so it's kind of a big deal. And I'll just, I would just want to share one little paragraph with you all that, that was in the nomination form that Julie submitted. So she said, "Key stakeholders have been and continue to be an integral part of enhancing opportunities and changing the way District 6 students learn. Integrating practical application in the learning process from an early age is providing the why behind learning and allowing for more student-driven learning. District 6 and key stakeholders recognize that a one-size-fits-all model is not effective and that collaborating is the best way to prepare students for a variety of viable options upon high school graduation. In addition to providing concurrent enrollment, industry certification, and on-the-job training opportunities while students are in high school is helping to remove barriers for many students." So, thank you so much, Julie Hill, for nominating us and, and thank you for selecting us to be a Succeeds Prize winner for 2021. It comes with a little bit of cash, which we'll pour back into our concurrent enrollment program.
Mr. Hayfley? Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events. Assistant Superintendent of Elementary and K-8 Leadership, West Huddle, provided an update on the Twinton Academy of Pre-Engineering. The board discussed community engagement and debriefed the work session to conclude.
Present.
Mrs. Mash?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Mrs. Mueller?
Present.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
So I wanted to share a little bit about COVID and really where we are with some numbers and, and quarantines and things. You all are aware that we did ask Shawshin Elementary School to have all students and staff wear masks here for the next couple of weeks. I did learn today from the Health Department, their recommendation is actually now 28 days for us to wear those masks to have, go through two incubation periods of the virus. So Shawshin and Jefferson High School have both been asked to do that and due to the small size of their school and then the number of positive cases in the school related to the small population at both of those sites. We did early, prior to students returning to preschool, we did have preschool staff wear masks or go remote rather than working together because, right, coming in the first day back, we had a couple of positive cases among staff at the preschool. Union Colony Elementary, starting today, did go remote. They plan to be remote for the next two weeks. My understanding is that decision was made because of the number of staff who are quarantined, that they just weren't able to continue operations in person in brick and mortar. So they will be remote for the next couple of weeks at least, is my understanding. You know, we keep, we continue to look at, should we be moving toward masks for all? We know in, in these cases, it's been important to do that. We've also asked all of our transportation department, even when they're not driving, to be wearing masks because of the numbers of cases we've had in the transportation department. Today, we also asked for our nutrition services team to all wear masks. They're working in kitchens and, and they too are short-staffed and really can't afford to have people quarantined or sick in isolation. And so we've asked them to all wear masks as well. We have opted into the serial testing program with the state of Colorado. We're still waiting on details for that. My understanding is we won't have all that information probably till the end of the month, but the way it technically works is that families and staff may opt into serial testing, which means they would test every week. The state will bring in the testers to do the testing and if we are a part of serial testing and then there, there's an exposure, the individual who is in serial testing does not have to quarantine. So there's some advantage to families and staff opting into that serial testing. So there'll be more to come on that to share with you all in the, in the future. I wanted to share that we are aware that we have had two students who have been hospitalized and released from the hospital. Thank goodness. One is a younger student and one is a high school student. We have had two adults hospitalized. My understanding is we don't have anybody in critical condition right now, but we're, we're watching that closely as well. And, you know, just, we're a big organization. We're 22,000 students and 2,500 staff and we are, we're going to see some of this and, and I will continue to keep you informed. Our staff vaccination rate is reported at 72% with the staff who we have, who have shared their, their vaccine status with us. Here in the county, the county positivity rate is right around 10, just over 10% for the county. Greeley Evans is below them at 8.6%. We are, you know, that's still, we'd really like to see that positivity rate below 5% as you all know. It's still higher than we like to see. So we're watching that very carefully. We are seeing uptick in Weld County of cases between zero and 19-year-olds. So, so there are some increase in those cases as well. Most of the hospitalizations right now, according to the county today, are 50-plus year olds and most of them are folks who are unvaccinated. We, there has been some question around pediatric hospital beds and in asking the question day of the health officials, they're, the pediatric hospital beds are full in, in the area, the area that Weld County residents would access. So that would also include Children's Hospital. However, what they are sharing is that that is, that is not primarily due to
Present.
Mr. Tally?
Present.
Seven members present.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We're now to our superintendent's report. So Dr. Pilch, I'll hand this, man, so, so good to see you so close.
Thank you, President Matthews. We've, we've had, really had a really great start to school here and I want to just, Teresa's coming to the podium to bring up some photos from these first several days of school that we want to share with you.
Additional repairs that we need to make down the road. And those are all the, um, all the announcements that I have tonight. Are there, Ms. Crane, are there, do we have public, our public participation portion? Do we have anybody speaking to us tonight?
Not regarding agenda items.
Not regarding agenda items. All right. So we'll wait to the very end to allow those, uh, those people to speak. So we are to our work session report. So Ms. Crane, I'll hand it over to you.
Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events. Assistant Superintendent of Elementary and K-8 Leadership Wes Tuttel provided an update on the Twinton Academy of Pre-Engineering. The board discussed community engagement and debriefed the work session to conclude.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We're now to our superintendent's report. So Dr. Pilch, I'll hand this in. So, so good to see you so close.
Thank you, President Matthews. Um, we've, we've had, really had a really great start to school here. And I want to just, Teresa's coming to the podium to bring up some photos from these first several days of school that we want to share with you. And I'll just remind you that we did the rolling start again in grades K through eight, where half of our students reported on the first day and then the other half of the students reported on the second day. And then all students came in on the third day, um, K through eight. And then our, our kinder, for our kindergartners, we did the same thing where we had half come um, on the 17th of August. And then they stayed home on the 18th and the other half came on the 18th and then they were all with us um, on the 19th. We started preschool on the 19th and brought all of our preschoolers in. I have been out meeting with each school staff to welcome them back. In those meetings, I'm sharing Millevy override update and bond issue update. And then I'm also talking a little bit through Innovation 2030. And we're hoping for staff to have some time in that Innovation 2030 plan to see themselves in that plan. I've also been able to answer questions that they have with the start of the school and with COVID questions that have come up. And then I've also been able to hear feedback from the staff on the opening of the school and, and on the Innovation 2030, as well as the update on the Millevy override and the bond issue. So it's, it's been a great start and you can see the children are happy to be back. The staff are happy to have their children back. And I think the parents are pretty happy to have their children back in school as well. Thank you, Mrs. Myers, for providing that. Um, I, I have a few other updates for you I'd like to share. We are still working through some issues at transportation. We are short 10 drivers in, in the department overall. And then we do have nine or so of our people out in quarantines or in isolation due to COVID. And so we, you know, we're running double and triple routes to get the children picked up. But um, I was mistaken when I shared last week that we had cleared the wait lists for transportation. We do still have families waiting for transportation and wait lists haven't been cleared. So when I asked the question today about why wait lists hadn't been cleared, it's because the office workers who are working to clear those lists and get the students to sign the buses are out driving bus every day. So we're, you know, they're working hard, they're doing the best they can to, to get children to school and, and from school. And I, you know, I am very thankful to the parents for being so patient as we work through those issues in transportation. Um, I'll keep you posted in our weekly memo as, as things continue to involve, evolve with transportation. I wanted to share a celebration with you all. You may have seen in, in our bulletin or in the paper that District Six was a winner for the Succeeds Prize for 2021. Uh, and my understanding is this is really a pretty big deal because you win this for, for being innovative and agile and, and entrepreneurial in, in what you are doing in the district. We were nominated by the Success Foundation. Julie Hill sent in the nomination and we were selected. And so it's kind of a big deal. And I'll just, I would just want to share one little paragraph with you all that, that was in the nomination form that Julie submitted. So she said, "Key stakeholders have been and continue to be an integral part of enhancing opportunities and changing the way District Six students learn. Integrating practical application into the learning process from an early age is providing the why behind learning and allowing for more student-driven learning. District Six and key stakeholders recognize that a one-size-fits-all model is not effective and that collaborating is the best way to prepare students for a variety of viable options upon high school graduation. In addition to providing concurrent enrollment, industry certification, and on-the-job training opportunities while students are in high school is helping to remove barriers for many students." So thank you so much, Julie Hill, for nominating us and, and thank you for selecting us to be a Succeeds Prize winner for 2021. It comes with a little bit of cash, uh, which we'll pour back into our concurrent enrollment program. So I wanted to share a little bit about COVID and really where we are with some numbers and, and quarantines and things. You all are aware that we did ask Shawshene Elementary School to have all students and staff wear masks here for the next couple of weeks. I did learn today from the Health Department, their recommendation is actually now 28 days for us to wear those masks to have, go through two incubation periods of the virus. So Shawshene and, and Jefferson High School have both been asked to do that. And due to the small size of their school and then the number of positive cases in the school related to the small population at both of those sites. We did early, um, prior to students returning to preschool, we did have preschool staff wear masks or go remote and rather than working together because right coming in the first day back, we had a couple of positive cases among staff um, at the preschool. Union Colony Elementary, starting today, did go remote. They plan to be remote for the next two weeks. My understanding is that decision was made because of the number of staff who are quarantined, that they just weren't able to continue operations in person in brick and mortar. So they will be remote for the next couple of weeks at least, is my understanding. Um, you know, we keep, we continue to look at, should we be moving toward masks for all? Um, we know in, in these cases, it's been important to do that. We've also asked all of our Transportation Department, even when they're not driving, to be wearing masks because of the numbers of cases we've had in the Transportation Department. Today, we also asked for our Nutrition Services Team to all wear masks. They're working in kitchens, um, and, and they too are short-staffed and really can't afford to have people quarantined or sick um, in isolation. And so we've asked them to all wear masks as well. Uh, we have opted into the serial testing program with the state of Colorado. We're still waiting on details for that. My understanding is we won't have all that information probably till the end of the month. Uh, but the way it, it technically works is that families and staff can, may opt into serial testing, which means they would test every week. The state will bring in the testers to do the testing. And i- if we are a part of serial testing, um, and then there, there's an exposure, the individual who is in serial testing does not have to quarantine. So there's some advantage to families and, uh, staff opting into that serial testing. So there'll be more to come on that to share with you all in the, in the future. Uh, I wanted to share that, uh, we are aware that we have had two students who have been hospitalized and released from the hospital. Uh, thank goodness, one is a younger student and one is a high school student. We have had two adults hospitalized. Um, my understanding is we don't have anybody in critical condition right now, but we're, we're watching that closely as well. And you know, just, we're a big organization. We're 22,000 students and 2,500 staff. And we are, we're going to see some of this. Um, and, and I will continue to keep you informed. Our staff vaccination rate is reported at 72% uh, with the staff who we have, who have um, shared their, their vaccine status with us. Here in the county, the county positivity rate is right around 10, just over 10% for the county. Greeley Evans is below them at 8.6%. Um, we are, you know, that's still, we, we'd really like to see that positivity rate below 5% as you all know. Um, it's still higher than we like to see, so we're watching that very carefully. We are seeing uptick in Weld County of cases between zero and 19-year-olds. Um, so, so there are some increase in those cases as well. Most of the hospitalizations right now, according to the county today, are 50-plus-year-olds and most of them, um, are folks who are unvaccinated. Uh, we, there has been some question around pediatric hospital beds and in asking the question day of the health officials, there, the pediatric hospital beds are full um, in, in the area, the area that Weld County residents would access. So that would also include Children's Hospital. Um, however, what they are sharing is that that is, that is not primarily due to COVID. It's lots of things going on right now with, with pediatrics. So significant uptick in RSV, uh, another very contagious virus. And then sadly, other things like suicide attempt and, and drug overdose and some things like that also, um, is what we're being told. Um, you know, so we're continuing to watch the number of positive cases that we have. We are, we, you know, we are seeing, um, we did see over the weekend a, a significant increase in cases. We, we do have 137 uh, total positive cases right now in the district between students and staff. Uh, that's about a third of the highest that we ever got last year in one month during the pandemic last year. Um, just as a kind of point of reference, we had about 1,400 total positive cases last year, um, in, once we were able to actually keep track, track of cases. At this time last year, you may remember that we really didn't have much capability to test. Um, and, and we certainly weren't doing our own testing at the district here or in schools this early last year, which a lot of, a lot of these test results are coming from our own testing as well. So, um, you know, watching this very carefully with the team, the emergency response team, we've come back to again, two meetings at least a week. We'll meet more frequently if we need to. And then we're working, we're working on it every single day to, to figure out that balance of, is it, you know, is it time to move a site to all masks? Is it time to move the whole district to masks? Um, and what is, you know, what is the most appropriate decision around what, what's happening with the cases? I know there's still a very strong will out there to not require masks and I know there's strong will out there to require masks. So, uh, this is, uh, not an issue that we have strong agreement on, on, um, throughout our community. And so as the professionals, that's work that we're going to need to do together as we continue to watch the numbers. I think that is it, Mr. Matthews, unless you all have questions for me.
I have a question.
Ms. Papas, do you have a question?
Uh, Ms. Solis doesn't.
Oh, sorry.
It might be the same one.
Uh, Ms. Solis, sorry.
So on the transportation issue, do we know how many students that's impacting?
Yeah, it's, it is a lot of students throughout the district. I asked the question today if we were talking closer to dozens or hundreds and they said closer to hundreds.
So I know that, I mean, technically they're not quarantined because of COVID, but that is an aspect of COVID. And so I do feel like we need to make sure that we are also watching those numbers. So although COVID numbers are here, amount of kids that are not in school because we don't have enough bus drivers and some of that is due to COVID, I think that's a really important number to watch. I mean, we want kids in school and they're not in school. So I would like to keep track of those numbers.
Yeah, we are watching our daily attendance rate and we are, we are not seeing a significant concern there with the daily attendance, but we are watching that and I will continue to do so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. This is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Crane.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Papas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Next item on the agenda is, uh, the approval of the consent agenda. And this is also an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Papas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item is a recognition of, uh, C-A-C-T-E Teacher of the Year and New Teacher of the Year. And so Dr. Pilch, uh, this looks like your portion and I'll hand it over to you.
It looks to me like Dr. Dattery believes this is her portion. So I, I am excited to have Dr. Dattery introduced for us, our Colorado Association Current Technical Education Teacher of the Year and New Teacher of the Year. This is really quite the honor. And so welcome ladies and, uh, Dr. Dattery, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Uh, President Matthews and members of the board, it is with true excitement that we get to share with you this honor and this recognition tonight. I just want to be able to say a few words and then I want to turn it over to them and for them to just speak about, um, what this means and the work that they do every day with and for our kids and our community. It's very exciting. So, uh, Ms. Laura Appelhans, she is a, a family and consumer science teacher at Greeley Central High School. And she is our Colorado CTE Teacher of the Year Award recipient. And that is just an incredible honor. This award, just to tell you a little bit about this award, it recognizes the finest career in technical education teachers, their extraordinary contributions to the field of CTE, the programs that exemplify the highest standards and the activities that promote and expand career in technical education at the secondary level across the state. And to know that Lauren, our Ms. Appelhans, has that honor is just, we know that about her, for others to know that about her is so incredible. And like, I, I, she's an amazing teacher. Right behind her then is our, uh, very own Chelsea Bernard. She is also, I think it's something about this family and consumer science teacher, uh, she is also a, a fax teacher, as we call him. And she's at Northridge High School. She was, is the recipient of the Colorado CTE New Teacher of the Year. And this award goes to a teacher who is within their three to five years of teaching, which is just such a great spot in the teaching career. She is being recognized for her contributions to career in technical education and student learning within the CTE pathway. So it is just an incredible honor for both of these two, um, amazing educators in our district. Uh, they are not only inspirational to those in their field, but truly to people in our own district. And I know that as I get to work with Lauren in, um, career, uh, our, our district curriculum council, our professional development council, she is always saying, yes, let me help, let me do this, let me give back to this profession and help others across the system. So, and Chelsea, it's just an honor to have you in our district as well. So thank you for what you both do. Uh, it is just, it's a, it's an honor to have you both with us. And Jenny is our, uh, Career and Technical Education Specialist. She just props them up each and every day and we just thank you for the work that you do. And I want to turn it over to the two of you if you'd like to say a few words.
Go ahead.
Sure. I just got told I could say something, so this is off the top of my head. Um, it is a huge honor to work for the Greeley School District. I am, I come to work every day so excited to see the kids. They are extraordinary people. And, um, working within family and consumer science is really, really rewarding. I feel like I get to teach them things that they will use for the rest of their life, life skills. And, um, it's exciting and a fun way to teach them. And that's what I come to school every day is trying to get them to learn in a fun way, but still use, um, helpful, uh, learn helpful skills. So I'm really, really honored to have this, um, award and thankful to work here.
Thank you again. Um, I'm super excited to work in District Six. I've worked here, this is my 13th year, which I had a little issue when I told my students this morning that I've only been doing this for 10 years and I was like, oh, I'm wrong. Um, but I'm really glad to hear that we are getting recognized for concurrent enrollment. And I'm really glad to hear about all the great things that the district is doing because that's why I love working for our district. And, um, I've had some really great family and consumer sciences teachers to look up to and that have worked here in this district. I had an opportunity to sit with them and I'm so thankful for that opportunity and the opportunity that this district allows me to be with my family. I just have to say that as family in consumer sciences, it's really important and this is really nerve-wracking. I'm going to be done. Thank you very much.
Can I say something?
Yes, Ms. Solis.
So I just want to tell you, this is like my eighth year on school board and I come from community, I don't come from education. And what I have learned of what teachers do during this time on the board, I mean, there's, there's times that I'm just in tears because I, I know what you guys bring every day. And a lot of times it's digging into your own pocket to pay for something for your classroom. And a lot of that, um, I learned about from Juanita, who's a veteran teacher from District Six sitting out there. I think she has like over 30 years in, in education. And I'm just inspired by you all. I mean, I can't imagine a job that gives more to a community than being a teacher. And I thank you for choosing this career and thank you for being so wonderful to our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Well said. And congratulations, um, to you, Ms. Appelhans, to you, Ms. Bernard. Thank you, Ms. Schelling, for, for being here tonight and congratulations to you as well. Our next item of business is our Innovation 2030 Launch Discussion. And again, Dr. Pilch, I believe this one's yours.
Thank you, President Matthews. And, uh, Ms. Crane is going to assist in moving the slides here for us, I think, and, and will probably assist in, in this presentation, actually. As you all know, Mrs. Crane has, has helped, uh, come right alongside me in leading Innovation 2030, our strategic plan. And I just remind you all that, uh, we, we have completely revised what was Innovation 2020. Most of those goals were met and we are now ready and have been beginning to fully launch Innovation 2030. I'll just take you through the timeline here and, and share with you, um, what has already been happening. We took the, the new brochure out to our district leadership team on July 19th. And then I've been doing staff meetings at every site here in August. I still have a, a few more sites to get to where I'm sharing the brochure. We've also asked each site to work with their faculty to identify and, and departments to, to identify where they see themselves in the plan and the work that, that they see, uh, that they will be doing as, as employees here in District Six as a part of that plan. And then on October 13th, we will actually do the action team launch. And this is where we'll bring together about 150 or so folks, uh, who will serve on the action teams with the, the action team leaders from the steering committee and, um, really launch the, the full work of this plan. And so the work that, um, that we'll be looking at is that, of course, uh, the objectives and strategies and actions and tasks and then outcomes and measures that will, will be telling us, you know, that we're hitting the mark on what we've promised. We'll have an owner or owners of each of the action, uh, plans that will be responsible for ensuring that those action plans get implemented. Those owners are typically, uh, um, cabinet member, uh, level owners for those. And then of course, as a part of, of each action team, they'll have the start and finish dates and they'll identify the resources that are necessary to fill, fulfill that action plan. Kristi's going to show you a little bit about, um, the smart sheet here you can see on the screen. Uh, you all have seen something like this before with Innovation 2020. But this is the document, the tool that we use to document all of the work that, that occurs in our, on our action teams. And, uh, you see, the tool also identifies who's on the team, the resources that are needed, um, and, and what we're measuring to ensure that, that we've, we're fulfilling the promise that we've made in the strategic plan. Christina, what would you add about the smart sheet tool?
I would say that you'll see a lot of blank spaces right now. After that October 13th date, those action teams will come together and really start working to flesh out these plans. So we did have some, um, objectives, strategies, actions, and tasks identified that you have all seen and looked through. All of those have been input into this plan already. As the teams continue to work, these may get a little bit larger as we plan out the work to come. But it allows us to be able to take this for each team and break down what the work will be, who will own it, when it will be accomplished. And that also allows us to look at things, um, from team to team. We can pull reports from all of these together so that we know we're not going to overwork anyone at any point in time. So it provides us a, a certain amount of accountability here also.
And then to, uh, keep the work moving, uh, the next steps are to, to continue with our quarterly steering committee meetings. And then there will be quarterly action team meetings. So what will happen is the action team will do their work. The steering committee member that is on that action team will, will bring that work back to the entire steering committee so that there's this constant updating going on, so that people are all on the same page and we're making sure the work's getting done. You will have continued board updates as we do our board updates throughout the year. Uh, we will update straight from the work in the strategic plan. And then again, um, the data dashboard will populate on the district website so we can actually see the data there like we have done in the past with Innovation 2020. Do you want to share that too?
So I will pull up our Innovation 2020 dashboard. Obviously there's no data to show for Innovation 2030 as of right now. Um, so you will see here an example of what that will look like. Now with Innovation 2030, we will have the ability to go a little bit deeper. So as you look within the four focus areas, there's some additional information on our main goals. And so we'll provide progress updates on how that work is progressing. But then also in the new dashboard, you'll have the ability to click on something like this and actually go through and go see deeper. So you'll see the data that supports this work. So we know there are a lot of pieces and a lot of, a lot of things that contribute to something like, um, graduation rates. If you click on the graduation rates graph, you'll be able to see some additional information like attendance rates, course failure rates, things like that, that we know as we, as we do work in those areas, it affects our graduation rates overall. So that information will all be available on the website.
So it's very public and outward facing, so, uh, we're not only holding ourselves accountable, but we're counting on our community to hold us accountable as well. So I'm happy to, uh, take questions that you all might have. I, I shared with you earlier this evening that, uh, Mrs. Crane will continue to stay involved with the strategic plan even as she moves into the Human Resources Director position. But she, she'll stay involved for a little while here until we get a, a new staff member up to speed with this.
All right, thank Dr. Pilch. Uh, I think our first question is from Ms. Papas.
Yeah, where is my little bud? No. Um, so you talked about the action team launch and I just would, I just wish you could, um, clarify a little bit for me. So you said there will be a, quite a few people in October. Is, are they different levels from different sites?
Yeah, so what we have, you know, as we, as we went out to gather feedback on, on this strategic plan with the community, big community input session we had last year, all through Zoom and through district leadership team and, uh, Teachers Advisory Council and the GEA Exec Board, all along the way, people have been able to volunteer to be on action teams if there were action teams they were interested in as they were giving us feedback. And so we have populated all of those folks into different action teams. Typically there are co-leads for each action team and that will often be a, uh, cabinet member and a director or a director and a building principal. And then in those action teams are teachers, community members, administrators, uh, students from our students, our Council of Student Representatives. So there, you know, it's a wide range of, of people, really well over 100 people will be invited. And the purpose of that, that launch is really to bring them in and let them, you know, they won't have all necessarily seen the Innovation 2030 brochure even yet. So they'll get to see that, they'll, we'll train them on the smart sheet tool that Christina just shared with you, uh, so that they know that's the tool they're going to be working in as team members and that's where their information and data will go. Uh, we'll talk about the outcomes and measures that we're expecting out of this plan and how each of the actions they, they develop need to be leading toward tho- those outcomes and measures. So it should be a, a, a big event and a lot of fun and, and we, we will invite you all to it.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Tally is next. Oh, wait, is that Ms. Mash? All right, okay.
I was just wondering about, um, community, um, information, like are we, do we share out our little brochure with parents and community members and?
Absolutely. And, and if you're speaking to community groups and you want copies of the brochure, let Christina know and we'll get those to you. But, uh, I've got a box full in my car that I'm taking everywhere I get a chance to share those, I'm sharing them. I mean, even like last week when I sat on the, my Board of Directors for the North Range Behavioral, I took the brochures with me and when it was my turn to share any, any partnership updates, I shared the brochure and, uh, talked a little bit about Innovation 2030 and some of the highlights of it.
Somebody over this way has a question. I'm going to guess, oh, it's Ms. Mueller.
So a question, and as we begin to report some of this data in the Innovation
So a question, and as we begin to report some of this data in the Innovation 2030, what kind of data gaps might we find due to COVID pauses on assessment and other things that might be impacted by that? I'm guessing we might have a few dropouts in data that just isn't totally up to date.
So we have, so one of the gaps, of course, is going to be CMAS data. But we will have growth data, we do have growth data this year. They were able to calculate that. But we don't have year-to-year data on CMAS because we didn't test a year ago. So that is a gap. But we do have NWA data, DIBLs data, and other common local assessments that we use. You know, I think the hardest thing for us to measure really is parent satisfaction. We do that through, we have a parent survey, and we've worked and worked with our vendor who provides that to try to increase the parent participation. But that has always been a challenge and a gap for us if we don't get a solid parent return on those surveys. So our hope is that our parent advocates that we're hiring at the elementary and middle school level will be able to help, you know, to encourage parents and get parents to participate in those so we have good, solid parent data. But that's always been a gap, even before this year. I think right now, our graduation rates look pretty good. It's not certified, and I say pretty good, they look like they've increased, which I'm really excited about, but it's not been certified yet. So I can't share that with you at this time. But even through this time, I think, you know, people have kept the work up and have pushed really hard to get students to graduation and beyond.
Ms. Elise, I think.
So, yeah, it helps me. So one of the things that I can tell you as a school board member is that we were really lacking this kind of work. And our biggest challenge was how do we make a plan, a strategic plan, that is something that you actually operate from and you go back to and you tweak it and you change it. But this is your guiding light, and we've done that, which is what I love about this plan. The one thing that really makes me think, though, is COVID. You know, there's things that happen within our school district. We've seen floods, we've seen, you know, raids at businesses that have affected our schools. So I'm wondering if there's a plan of when we have something huge like that, how do we incorporate that into our strategic plan? Because, I mean, there's going to be questions as far as who did we lose during COVID? Who didn't come back to school? And that kind of information, where did they go? How far are they behind? All of those kinds of things, which I don't think we really thought about when we did the strategic plan. And my hope is that anytime we have a community challenge like COVID, we use this strategic plan to really map out tough decisions like, do we go and wear masks? You know, do we need to quarantine? How do we do this process if we don't have strict mandates from the state level? How do we, as a school district, apply this strategic plan to those big challenges? And I guess that's what I'd kind of like to hear more about. And how do we tweak it? How do we turn it? How do we make this work when we have a big situation in our community happen?
So I think you're asking for possibly another action area that we did not include in the strategic plan because we don't have anything in there about emergency preparedness and response. Of course, we, as a system, have a crisis response team and have a strong crisis and emergency response team process that will continue and has always been a part of the work here in the district since even before I got here, which is how they responded to the flood. I do think that within the area of operational and organizational effectiveness, that's where the pieces are around just keeping the operations running and doing that in a fiscally responsible way. And there's no question in my mind that had we not had that work already this far on the strategic plan, we would probably still be writing our ESTER Plan for the Colorado Department of Ed. I mean, some districts are still writing their plans. Our plan has been written, submitted, and approved, and I actually signed off on a requisition today to start spending significant dollars from that plan. And we were able to do that because of this strategic plan. We already knew we needed counselors and social workers and parent liaisons and attendance advocates, and we needed to lower class size and get more adults to student ratio in the school. And that was because of this plan. So I think as much as we, as much work as we do in planning, I think the most important thing we do is that we have a clear plan about what it is we do for kids and how we do that to ensure that all students are successful. And in that event, then, whatever crisis is thrown at us, we should be able to wrap a plan around that with the crisis response team and the folks that we have in leadership.
Thank you.
I have a question, but I don't know which one my button's at. Mr. Tally.
I don't have a movable mic, so I can't absolutely move up here. First, I would thank you for your transparency and your team for your transparency throughout this whole plan to not only us as the Board of Directors, but also to the community. And I like this, that it's online. And I see on there that there's a mobile app. Is that true?
A smart sheet is available in mobile, so the teams would be able to access their information on mobile. The information that is posted on the website can also be accessed via mobile as well.
Okay, cool. And then...
He wants a QR code.
I want a QR, I'm trying to be up to date here on technology. To the community, I guess, I kind of want to say, I wish I could look into a camera to make it really dramatic, but I don't know which camera's looking at me. But I, like, all this work is because of the community and how everyone rallied around the school district. And I think that that is awesome. And oftentimes, it seems like people think because we work in schools or because we represent schools, us up here, that we know everything that needs to happen. And that's not the case at all. And so it was really cool to see two Januaries ago, when we all came together in Evans and really started this conversation. And then last year, when we came together again via Zoom and really ironed out the details and talked about what this district needed and what our students and our staff and our communities needed. So I think this, to me, I have to thank the community so much for being our soundboard and also for kind of those checks and balances of making sure that we are providing what the district needs and what our communities need. So hopefully, everyone takes a look at it and takes advantage of all the hard work that is in there and asks questions and does all the hard work. Because this is a lot of work, and this is the future of our school district. So I think it's pretty cool.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Any other questions? I apologize to everyone where we've had a little bit of a shuffle up here, and that's why people don't know which button to push, and I can't tell sometimes who's punched a button. But I don't think there's any other questions. Okay, all right. Well, again, I would echo what Mr. Tally just said. Please, go to our website, check this out. You can see everything that we're doing. You can do a deep dive into what's been accomplished and what's being accomplished and where we are in this district. And so thank you, Dr. Pilch, also for that launch discussion. We're now to the next item, and that is public participation regarding non-agenda items. And we did not have anyone to speak for agenda items, but we do have several to speak for non-agenda items. And I just want to remind everybody that this portion of the agenda provides the community with an opportunity to present brief comments, to pose questions to the Board of Education on items relating to Greeley-Evan School District Six. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to our Board Secretary and not to individual board members. The Board typically does not engage in discussion or provide an immediate response to the input, but will ask district staff to respond as appropriate. The Board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect. And we expect all speakers to exercise their free speech rights responsibly. Speakers will be heard in the order in which they signed up and speak to speak, and comments are limited to two minutes. If more than one person wishes to speak on the same topic, please focus comments on providing only new information and not repeating views already expressed by the speakers. Thank you in advance for your participation. And our first speaker tonight is Ms. Sonia Miller, a resident of Greeley District Six, speaking on mass discrimination and segregation. So, Ms. Miller, welcome to the podium, and you'll have two minutes.
Hello, everyone. I wanted to address a few things that were said in last week's, two weeks ago, meeting, specifically to you, Ms. Mash. You had said, and I quote, "Thank you for the grassroots organizations who have worked tirelessly to think, to talk to people about the vaccine, and to bring events to schools." These events you speak of are experiments. This vaccine is still experimental for 12, 13, 14, and 15-year-olds. It was only FDA-approved today for 16 and above. So this is an experiment. So these events you're speaking of, that you're so proud of, are experiments on children. Your next quote, "I look at Sunrise and just have been really proud to say that I work at the number one vaccinator in Will County and number three in the state, and we've removed many barriers to getting this vaccine." Sunrise Clinic, isn't that the one who contacts every single school superintendent in this district to coordinate these events you speak of, these experiments? Is it not a conflict of interest that you are working for Sunrise Clinic, who is coordinating these vaccination experiments on our children within our schools in our county? Is that a conflict of interest? Next. Grassroots organizations don't advertise on Will County government page for your events. This isn't a grassroots organization. Are there financial incentives for being the number one vaccinator in the county? You also said, "I also want to be very clear that as a nurse, I know from the scientific literature, data, and vaccines that the vaccine against the coronavirus is safe, effective at preventing COVID-19 unless there's a risk of severe illness. This is our way out of the pandemic. We need to be vaccinated so we can end this." What literature is it that you're referring to and where'd my mic go? I want to know what you're talking about. If you're talking about the 28 side effects listed on the vaccine fact sheet that come with Pfizer, are you talking about all these deaths and life-threatening events on the VAR's website, the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System? What literature are you reading? Because what I'm reading, these vaccines are not safe.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Our next speaker is Mr. Josh Wayne Scott, a resident of District Six, a parent of a student enrolled in District Six, member of District Six staff, GEA member. He's come to speak on staffing and COVID policies and procedures. Mr. Wayne Scott, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you very much, Board of Education. It's been a while. It's nice to see you all again. I hope that you're having a lovely evening. I just wanted to talk about three things real quick that are coming up, and those are vaccines, masks, and cohorting. Pfizer just received their authorization. We heard that just a moment ago, and that's super great. I'm super excited for that. I got a Pfizer vaccine. I got two of them, actually. This arm both times because it's my frisbee-throwing arm, and I don't want to get that one injured. I would also like to recommend that anybody who has not, please do. I've had my daughter vaccinated, my wife's been vaccinated, my dad, my mom, all the people that I care about have been vaccinated, and it's been a wonderful thing. I do want to say that this does create an issue for our elementary schools and our sixth graders because they are under that age where they can't get one. This creates an issue because now, what do we do? Strongly recommend for a mask doesn't work. As we can see on our doors when you walk into this building, it says, "If you are vaccinated, you're welcome to not wear a mask." Last board meeting, I know that wasn't the case. Strongly recommend does not work unless we put something in place for it. Masks help reduce quarantines. We've got 27 of them right now that are going on, and we have one charter school that's remote. If we're not going to mask, we do need to start thinking about things like tighter cohorting, going back to the tight cohorts that we ran last year. It's not my favorite. It wasn't my favorite way to teach. I didn't enjoy that being my primary mode of teaching, but it was effective. You said at the beginning of this meeting, "We're already higher than we were at just about any time last year." So if we don't want to go remote, if we don't want to have our kids doing that, we need to think about this as a festering wound. You wouldn't just leave it hanging out and check it out and be like, hey, look, it's gross. Let's cover it up. Let's take some preventative action. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne Scott. Our next speaker is Ms. Chelsea Fairchild, resident of District Six, parent of a student enrolled in District Six, here to speak on optional mask mandate. Ms. Fairchild, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. I have a new kindergartner in District Six. I didn't see masking on the agenda for tonight's meeting, but I saw last week's meeting, and I did not feel represented by the public comments being made. I am here to strongly support a mask mandate for every person inside a District Six school until children under the age of 12 have had the chance to be fully vaccinated. The CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, CD, PHE, and countless other medical professionals have clearly said that masking is a necessary measure to keep all kids safe in our schools and have also noted an increase in child hospitalizations. I have heard a lot about choice in the masking debate, but I don't feel like my family has a fair choice. Even if I send my son to school in a mask, he is surrounded by unmasked, unvaccinated people. He is still in danger of catching this virus because it's almost impossible to get an N95 to fit him correctly on his little face. The alternative is that my five-year-old goes online, which I don't want. He loses the benefits of in-person learning, and he loses his place at Chapala. I want to give voice to the other parents who might be intimidated by the very loud, anti-mask, anti-vax, and anti-science crowds and ask the district to impose a mask mandate until children under the age of 12 have had their chance to be fully vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fairchild. Our next speaker is Ms. Jamie Weber, resident of District Six, here to comment on the previous meeting. Ms. Weber, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my team of physicians has recommended no masking or first-generation gene therapy injection for me and my family, and I do truly appreciate you respecting that and what you said at the beginning. My comments are in regards to the last meeting. For the record, 21 people spoke, not 12, as the Greeley Tribune reported. 20 of the 21 people who spoke were there to express their well-researched opinions and articulate their concerns regarding COVID-19 protocol for the school year. Among the people who spoke were nurses, doctors, teachers, and faculty, people whom I would consider to be experts and worth listening to. In addition, we had parents who poured their hearts out on behalf of their children and family. 20 people spoke pertaining to the agenda item, COVID-19 update. Our superintendent proceeded to say the following, "I'm not quite sure how this all got so spun up, but it seems that it did. But I'm really sorry, and it seems like we have a lot of people who are really angry over something that isn't really even on the agenda tonight. And I'm sad about that. I'm really sad about that. But I also appreciate people coming in and sharing their concerns and their truths. It's important that we hear from them, and I won't continue. But with all due respect, Dr. Pilch, it concerns me that you said our comments didn't pertain to something on the agenda, and then you proceeded to present a PowerPoint presentation about masking our kids and testing protocol. I don't find that sad. You downplayed our purpose in being here, which was the COVID update. And I want to know specifically, my question is, how does a mask with a slit in it prevent the spread of COVID while a child is playing their instrument? I would like to see, honestly, the scientific study that says that that's effective in preventing COVID. I stand here again on behalf of parents, faculty, and students who can't be here to simply ask for parents to be in charge of the masking, testing, and vaccinations, and you be in charge of education. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Weber. And thank you all for your comments and being here tonight and for sticking to that two-minute maximum time period. You guys have been, as our speakers, last board meeting, you guys have done a great job in terms of presenting your views and a respectful job. So we greatly appreciate that. And as we can see, and as Dr. Pilch mentioned earlier in our board meeting, that we have a number of different opinions expressed in our school district, and we're doing our best to make sure that we do what we can to keep our children safe and at the same time, do what we can to make sure that we're educating them as well as we can in addressing those needs as well. So we thank you guys for being here tonight, and that is all we have for tonight. So this meeting is adjourned.